Good evening. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, September 20th. Could all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Robertson, would you care to call the roll?
I would be happy to. Trustee Hugo.
Here.
Trustee Fike.
Here.
Trustee Raridan.
Here.
Trustee Fike is absent. Treasurer Kilmer.
Here.
Myself, of course, I'm here. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Six members present, a quorum.
Thank you. And now we'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Make a motion.
You'll make that motion?
Uh huh.
Okay, supported by...
Motion by Hugo, supported by Robertson.
Okay.
Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Let's see, trustee Fike.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yep.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Six, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, we will open the floor for public comment at this time. Seen no public comment, we will close the public comment and bring it back to the board. And number five on our agenda is recognition. No? Got the wrong... What's on there? What's up? Okay, alright.
You had one job.
Okay, number six, approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Ms. Hugo, supported by Dr. Raridan.
Supported by Raridan, alright, very good. Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yep.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Six, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven, old business. And we have Mr. Limina just going to speak a little bit about Tech Village and DDA growth. Mr. Limina?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. It has been interesting time for our DDA because we've had so much going on. As you guys are well aware, the road is in full swing out at Baldwin Road. It's a good thing that we did Baldwin Road because it made Grand Blank Enterprise Park possible. In addition to making Grand Blank Enterprise Park possible, it's also that road as a Class A all-season road out to the Tech Village entrance. Why is that important? Well, we've been talking about it since 2016. We've seen various developers come and take a look at it. It's been closed several times, the most recent one really at COVID and they walked away, a group from the East Coast. Some local investors along with other parties from outside the area have taken a look at it again. I might have mentioned that the Tech Village properties, both parcels are under contract at this time. In the due diligence period, it has to close beginning of October. I've been meeting every week with interested parties as well as potential end-users for the Tech Village in some light industrial and R&amp;D facilities. I'm really happy to say that we had another excellent meeting last week and this week with those parties. They left here today with the idea that they intend to execute their sales agreements and move forward. We've been working this project for so long, again, I believe it when I see something pushing dirt out there. But we did have some engineers here, architects for some of the projects. It's really, really promising, you guys, to see where we're, to see where we're at. Really exciting time because if this thing goes, just for the whole Grand Blank area, you saw what's going on in the city, you saw the construction going on at the Farmer Jack Kmart building where they did a demo and that's moving forward. You know, congratulations to the city of Grand Blank as well as the McAllisters Deli and then that garden building that's gonna go in, they got like a $5 million grant to help with that $11 million building that's gonna have live-work components, office space, beer garden. Why is that important for us? Well, because successful Grand Blank city is good for Grand Blank Township. Nothing breeds success like success. So is that all part of what we've been doing with the DDA, moving Grand Blank Enterprise Park forward? We got Dag Industries 200,000 square foot building going up right now along with the Fessler Bowman Building. Really, really amazing, exciting time because it's gonna bring a ton of taxable value into the community along with some really nice jobs. Last week, we had the opportunity to meet with one of the business owners who's looking to relocate his business into Tech Village. He already knows exactly which part of that parcel he wants to locate on. He also has options to move that business out of state. Obviously, we're gonna work very, very hard to keep that here. So I tell you all those just to say, this is great news. Again, I'm excited, but I'm also cautiously optimistic that we're moving forward. Once I know that they actually do own the property, then I'm gonna feel a lot better and I should be able to report that at your next meeting. The bond sale for the $4.1 million in bonds for the Baldwin Road project is slated for October 11th. That's good. Good news, bad news? The construction for Phase 3 on the Baldwin east of Holly was scheduled to be finished or completed in November of 2022. Due to some supply chain issues, we've been told that that project will not be completely completed until sometime in 2023. It will be, you'll be able to drive on it, it'll be reopened back up. But it just won't be completed until 2023 due to, they just can't gut some of the things that they need to do. And that's just, that's not unique to this project, it's just everywhere unfortunately. But great news that it's moving forward. Speaking of Baldwin Road, hopefully if you drove them past, you've looked up at the Water Tower painting project. It's got our great new logo on there, really looks cool, really gonna stand out. I love that. The KCI meeting, I am working to schedule one with the county right now. We're still waiting to hear on our application. As you guys know, they did award us a million dollars in ARPA funds earlier this year. We went back with an application for a regional product, project and asked for additional up to $5 million. I had indication that it had been awarded, but we still haven't gotten official word through the county board. Spoke with them yesterday, we were trying to arrange a meeting for either tomorrow afternoon or Monday or Tuesday of next week. They asked me to bring along all of the budget information for that project. Again, we have support from Atlas Township, Davidson Township, Village of Goodrich. And as you know, the Oakland County gave $10 million towards that project for the Oakland County phase of it. We just need to keep our diligence and stay on the county board, having them recognize. I think maybe they got a little bit of pushback from some communities who hadn't put any applications in for ARPA funds. But as far as I'm concerned, that's neither here nor there. This board had an excellent conversation and discussion about the amount of money that Grand Blank Township supports through countywide villages and we don't often get money back in our direction. This was one way for a regional project that helped multiple jurisdictions to give back. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stop pushing on that, I think it's very important. In the near future, you're going to get a request to expand our Industrial Development District so that businesses can qualify for Public Act 198. Why that's important to new board members is that if you think of our Industrial Development District, it's an overlay that went over our Light Industrial on South Holly Road. What that enables us to do is let qualified manufacturers apply for the PA 198 tax abatements where they can get up to 50% off their real property taxes for up to 12 years, but they have to meet very specific criteria. In order for them to even qualify though, we have to have that Industrial Development District overlay. I'm going to propose to the board that we put that IDD overlay over the Grand Blank Enterprise Park and then along the I-75 portion of the Tech Village. So if and when an eligible manufacturer moves in and is looking for that, that we're ready to go unqualified. You'll get the whole packet that talks about what is required, how many jobs you're bringing in, the dollar investment, all of those things. The last one we gave was for Magna with their new building. But there's several, and some have just recently expired over the last few years. But it's a great way for the board to be able to offer an enticement to get a business to locate here. Just one more tool in our toolkit, you'll consider each one of them individually. We're just, we have to create the overlay difference just for they can be eligible. And we have started talking with the Township's engineers, Row Engineering, about beginning the survey work for the water and sewer that we'll need to have in Tech Village if that project doesn't go. The developers of Tech Village are also talking to Row Engineering to have them do the survey work and preliminary engineering design work for the road. That's important because those things will kind of be simultaneous, we will build them at the same time. Regardless of whether they put the entire road and finish it all the way through, we need to keep that water and sewer all the way through and it's gonna follow that roadway. That's important because there's quite a bit of delineated wetlands in that area that have to be taken into consideration on where that road will go. If you look at our conceptual plan for that development, we have a fairly good idea where it needs to go, but until you really start doing borings and seeing what you have underneath, making sure you don't run into a big peat area or something that could impact and we've got to shift it one way or another, important for us to know what we're doing for water and sewer main work. The bad news, I'm trying to do some balance as you can see. The bad news is that we updated the cost of what that looks like and the road is up a couple million dollars and the water and sewer projects are probably up about $1.9 million engineer's estimate cost from when we first put these together back in 2018. If we didn't get it done for another two years, it'll probably be another $2 million. I mean, that's just, you know, with the way things are going, I don't expect prices to drop anytime soon. And that's the kind of a conversation we have with the developers today, that it's important to get moving on this thing. Because of that very reason. And finally, my last update on the strategic plan. We had a conversation about the creation of a TIF district for the Point North Business District. And we're starting to delineate what that would encompass. There's a large map in Conference Room A before you guys leave this evening. If you would take time just to take a look at that because we're, the next time, we're probably gonna have a conversation around that to make sure we're encompassing what you wanted. When we got together for our work session on the strategic plan, the board reiterated their support for us to continue to work this business district. So we just need to start to finalize what properties that you envision are in that. Please take a look at that map and provide comments to us. Be happy to answer any questions.
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Fike.
Just for a little bit of background on Tech Village, we had a developer at one time and they said they had to go, saying they're out.
Yes.
Okay.
In a way.
And then, then it was, you know, we were open to new developers and this new developer has stepped forward in a announcement, depending on, you know, whether this all works, is imminent.
We've had, over the, since I got involved and started to help create this thing, we have had three, I would say, very qualified developers on the precipice of moving forward. The last, and one stumbled because they just couldn't get the property under contract, just had difficulty in the negotiations. The next one was a group that were absolutely had the wherewithal, were excited, they'd been here several times. And they had to end their due diligence period and purchase the property one week after COVID caused us to shut down and basically caused the country to shut down. They stepped back. Unfortunately, one of the principals of that group passed away in the meantime. So a year later, when we had discussion with him, he was a very integral part of who they were moving forward and so it kind of hit a snag. This group has looked at it once before, two years ago, and then stepped away, also COVID concerns, you know, from the end of 2020. And in the meantime, came back, renegotiated the purchase price on the property and this is a whole new group of investors, venture capitalists who have partnered with, and there are some local folks involved. They are, I think that announcement is probably imminent.
And so assuming that proceeds, then what happens next?
So say they close on the property and, and beginning of October, they call and say, okay, we're the owners, let's get going. We will start then utilizing our engineers to begin planning our, our water and sewer main. Several years ago, we worked with our engineers and we created a timeline. And I think if you guys, if you look at a project like Tech Village, most municipalities don't do what we've already done to prep this project to get it going because we've had a great vision about, here we go, we've done a market assessment study. We created the zoning based upon the market assessment study. So that conceptual plan that we have is really, you know, all of this homework behind it, we've, we've probably saved a investor a million dollars on what he would have had to do to get as far as we've had. We didn't spend obviously near that, we partnered with the property owners, public-private partnership. Great investment tool, obviously because of the ROI potential that we have. So we're gonna start, if it's all systems are go, we're gonna start doing the pre-engineering for water and sewer. They're gonna do the pre-engineering for the road. Then they have to start working on putting parcels, working with some end-users to determine, you know, as they parcel it up, what's really needed out there. Because even though we have a conceptual plan, the actual pads that you create for those businesses can vary. Maybe somebody needs 14 acres, maybe somebody needs five acres. And I forgot how much total property is out there that's developable. There's a considerable amount of wetlands, but there's also like 130-some acres of developable property. So this is gonna be a huge, huge development. And these people are very interested, Joel, in the entire thing, just like we presented. One of the things that we've been consistent with is that the DDA is prepared to assist throughout this and it's the reason we formed a DDA. You know, we could be bringing in, our last revenue projection was somewhere between $9 and $16 million for the DDA in the next 10 years, just based on the growth from the Grand Blank Enterprise Park. Didn't include if anything was happening at Tech Village. That could mean that we have the potential to bring in, you know, $20 million or more over the next 10 years. Why would we bring in that extra money? Well, it's money we would have sent to other taxing agencies within the county and instead, we're gonna invent, invest it directly into public works, public good projects, pathways, lighting, you know, any safety features, could be roadways, could be wayfinding signage. Just, it has to have a public good for that investment. So really exciting time because it's gonna be one of the best-funded DDAs around because of all this new development.
Once again, though, they pay for the road.
They pay for the road, it's, it's...
The road comes out from where Woodfield is or...
It'll be across from Woodfield.
And then all the way to Baldwin Road.
Come out to Baldwin Road across from the Grand Blank Enterprise Park property.
Okay.
They pay for the road, $10 million. They'll have purchased that property, they're, they'll be all in at $14 or $15 million before they can even start on anything.
Okay, keep us informed. You're right, it's exciting and thank you for all your hard work on this with all you got going on.
Sure.
Negotiations and everything else, I mean, it sounds like, you know, you're, you're working hard, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yes, Treasurer Kilmer?
Quick question. What are delineated wetlands?
Mr. Limina?
What are they?
Yeah.
So delineated wetlands are protected, you know, you can actually look at federal maps and, and even though we have, like, you can look it up on a GIS map and look for federal delineated wetlands, they say these are protected wetlands that you can't disturb. Or if you are gonna have a project that disturbs a federally delineated wetland, then you have to do some type of mitigation, typically two to one. So they say if you're gonna disturb a wetlands because they're trying to preserve for flora and fauna that are associated with that wetlands, they make you go through and say, well, you wanna put a road through here, you're gonna compromise, you know, 10 acres, then we want you to set aside an additional 20 acres. Could be more. We were on one in the UP that we did a 26 to 1 and they still turned us down. Just depends. That was very unusual, but it was more about anti-mining than the wetlands. But you just never know, you have to work with them. So when you, when you look at a map and they're delineated wetlands, it's like you, you can't, you can't just, you know, well, we'll, we'll build over here, we'll run this over, whatever. You absolutely, those are protected areas of, that are considered permanent wetlands that are very important to the local ecosystem.
Thank you, Ken.
Yep.
It is exciting what's going on out there and, you know, some of the businesses that are looking at coming are very exciting as well. And it's, you know, as you mentioned, Mr. Limina, the projects going on in the city only help strengthen what we're trying to do in the township, so thanks for your great work, as Mr. Fike had said.
Thank you.
Okay, under new business, the board will consider Resolution 22-19 to approve a total authorized levy of 6.7300 mils for tax year 2022. And we have the breakdown there.
If, if the board recalls, we do this every year, we're required to put our proposed millages together that we're gonna base our budget on for the year and submit those to the county by the end of September. So this is the Form 4029 that lists the original millage amount and all of the, our operating millage plus the extra voted millage, police, mosquito, fire, and parks and recreation. And then what the millage requested levy would be for the 2022 tax year. Again, you guys are being asked to look at this, you'll notice that the next item on the agenda is to set the date for the truth and taxation hearing. This millage amounts that we're, you're being asked to approve on the 4029 are so that we can get it to the county by the required date. And then the truth and taxation, you give people the opportunity to come in at the truth and taxation hearing and talk to you about the millages. You'll note that the rollback rolls back the millages, you know, heavily rollback. So when you look at the actual millage amounts, but we hold a truth and taxation hearing so that we can hold as much of that millage as possible. We're still charging less millage amount than we did the prior year, but, you know, the truth and taxation is for that very purpose. So this time, you're just being asked to approve the 4029. This is what we built, the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget is with these millage amounts included.
Yes. So on the mosquito, because we ran into this last year, that .13 is what we build, but we were authorized for more?
Yeah, we could have proposed, we could have billed for .2290 mils, but we only need the 1303, .1303. If you recall, last year it was expiring, so we billed the full amount just in case voters didn't approve the millage request. It still would have given us the opportunity to have enough money to kind of carry it through almost for another full year. But since the voters did overwhelmingly approve it, we looked at what we had in reserve from tax collections and this is the amount that's projected that we're gonna need to continue our program. We also had a slight increase because we had to sign a new contract with Rose Pest Solutions that the board just approved last month.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Is a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, Mr. Fike makes that motion.
And I will second.
Okay.
Okay, trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Six, nothing, motion passes.
I don't know if everybody's met our Director of Assessing, but she's actually here this evening, so. I don't know if everybody's met this hearing, Tim?
I don't know, does the board, does everybody know who Danielle, you've all met her at some point?
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Mission accomplished.
Alright.
Congratulations.
Yeah. So item B, the board will consider a motion to set the date for the truth and taxation public hearing for October 4th, 2022. The public hearing is for the board to hear public comments regarding the proposed millage rate supporting the fiscal year 2023 budgets.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, supported by Dr. Raridan.
Motion by myself, supported by Raridan. Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Six, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, item C, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of flow meters, hydrant meters, and pressure relief valves from Ferguson Water Works for $24,319.13 and authorize the Township Superintendent to execute all related purchase orders. We have Mr. Boggs here.
Good evening. These are just a few operational items that we're looking to purchase. These hydrant meters, we purchased, I believe, four of them last year. So when contractors, actually, we rented them out to some residents if they're filling pools. We rent them hydrant meters so they can fill off of, of that and we can calculate the usage and bill them for it. The difference about these meters that they have what's called a pressure reduce, excuse me, reduced pressure principal valve, backflow prevention device built into them, so it protects the water supply. So with our crossconnection regulations with the state, we're protecting the water supply. So we're gonna phase our older hydrant meters out that are inefficient and don't have this device and adding two more, so we'd have a total of six.
Okay, yes, Mr. Kilmer?
Does this, is this so that the water won't flow backwards?
Correct, if there's an incident, they will reduce the risk of back siphoning. So if there's fire downstream or upstream of, of the water flow, it wouldn't pull anything back in. Sometimes, you know, contractors will have their holes dipped into something, filling it and, you know, that's not safe portable, we don't want that to come back into the system. And the, the other devices are called pressure release valves for hydrants. So as you guys saw, we took the power out of service and I have different devices, if you notice, on certain hydrants that will relieve the pressure because we're running the booster station on what's called pressure mode. So it just keeps a constant pressure, line pressure. In event of a surge, those things would blow off pressure. And I'm looking to purchase, I believe, three more, three more of those, so we would have them. So if I have other incidents, or excuse me, other operational issues in the other areas of the different water districts, I would have enough devices for that.
Okay, any questions, concerns? Anyone care to make that?
Is a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, Mr. Fike.
Mr. Fike is making that motion?
Supported by Ms. Hugo.
Supported by Hugo. Okay, trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Six, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, so the board will consider a motion to approve an order for 20 water meter chambers from Atma Supply for $22,300 and authorize the Township Superintendent to execute the purchase order.
So these chambers, so over time, they, 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 we start losing the reads and stuff like that, so they, they break down. Right now with the lead times, we have a lot of commercial meters that are starting to, to age. So instead of just buying the register, we buy the chamber, the lead times in half and it basically gives us a new meter. So perchance the meter was kind of out of its efficiency range, it's pretty much buying a brand-new meter. The body stays, it's just we swap in the guts and the lead times are, oh, I think, right now, they're about 15 to 18 weeks, just on the, those chambers and meters. It's cheaper than buying a whole body meter and, and it's less labor to, to do it this way. do it this way.
Mr. Kilmer.
Are we talking commercial or are we talking residential meters?
Commercial meters. So these are for inch and a half and two inch meters that we're starting to see that are over the 10-year warranty period and they're starting to, to go down. And with the lead time, we want to have stuff on the shelf so we can make the repairs.
Exactly. Okay, any thoughts, concerns? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make it.
Okay.
Mr. Fike is making the motion?
Support by Robertson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Let's see, Fike and Robertson, all right. Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Six, nothing, motion passes.
Item E, the board will consider adopting Resolution 2218, which begins the process of creating a special assessment district for the repaving of select roads, thank you, Mr. Boggs, for the repaving of select roads within the Concord Green subdivision, and sets the first public hearing date for October 4th, 2022.
I'll make the motion.
You make the motion, okay, Ms.
Hugo makes the motion, I'll second.
Okay.
Could I ask one question?
Yes.
I want to make sure with, through the clerk's office that we are on track to meet our deadline for getting the notices out to the residents and then public, published. It has to be more than 10 days before the hearing, and the hearing date's set for October 4th.
So counting back from that would be?
Well, from October 4th, 10 days is going to be?
14 days away now.
Now we'd make, now we'd make it, except the only trick would be the publication, whether it needs to begin by a certain date. I think the paper comes out on Thursday if you use the view.
Yes, oh, boy. And we might be cutting it close now that, now that you mention it, because today is the 20th, I believe they go to press on Wednesdays. Tuesday's late, maybe we've missed the?
You know, we might consider is, if you, if you can accommodate this on your second meeting in October, maybe we could bump that back, just to make sure we have enough time for that. So instead of, so will you amend the resolution to have the public hearing instead of October 4th, it would be the?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
Be the eight, okay. Then, yes, thank you for bringing that to my, to my attention.
So who made the motion?
Let's see.
Ms. Hugo?
Motion by Hugo.
Go along with mending your motion.
Okay, for the 18th then of 1918, and that would be supported by myself. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Six, nothing, motion passes.
Thanks.
Okay.
Item F, the board will consider a motion to award a water main and sewer main construction contract in Enterprise Park to Fessler, Fessler and Bowman, Inc. for $1,268,870 and authorize the Township Superintendent to execute all related contracts and documents.
So this is, went out for a bid on this project, it's, is part of that Grand Blank Enterprise Park. We had two bids in, one from Fessler Bowman, one from Zito. They were incredibly close bids, I think there was maybe like $12,000 or less separating both bids, but Fessler and Bowman was the low bidder. Row and Scott Hemmeyer is here from Row Engineering. They, as our township engineers, reviewed the bids for accuracy and their recommendation was to go with the low bidder, Fessler and Bowman, for $1.2 million. This is also a project that's been approved by the DDA for reimbursement to the DPW.
Okay, any questions or concerns? Okay. Okay, motion by Dr. Raridan, supported by Mr. Fike.
Motion by Raridan, supported by Fike. Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer. Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Six, nothing, motion passes.
Item G, the board, thank you. The, item G, the board will consider a motion to award a construction administration contract to Row PSC for the Enterprise Park Water and Sewer Installation Project for $19,900 and authorize the Township Superintendent to execute all related contracts and agreements.
Again, I'd just point out that Scott is here from Row, could answer any specific questions that you guys might have, but this is to provide that construction administration oversight for the Enterprise Park Water and Sewer Installation that you just awarded to Fessler and Bowman in your last agenda item.
What's the timeframe for the installation to take place?
Yesterday.
I know, that's why I'm wondering, just, do they do that during the winter? I've seen it done, but I?
Scott, you want to provide some, yeah?
Sure, come on up, Scott.
Good evening. Scott Hemmeyer with Row. Yeah, so the timeframe is to be substantially complete, and that term means that all the sewer's in, it's functional, it's been tested, and put into service somewhere to the water main by December 17th. So reason being is we want to stay ahead of that Fessler and Bowman development, so we can provide water and before their, their, their goal is to be operational by end of the year.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Been by there, they're, they're moving, they've got all the steel up there, they're moving.
It's kind of hard for us to get by there right now.
Yeah, yeah.
With the road closed. Yeah, okay, great, that's moving quickly then.
You know, if you guys recall, you were asked earlier this year to approve us to go ahead and purchase the pipe for this project, because we were concerned that there's a shortage of pipe, and so we bid this out, it was kind of like, hey, you guys are bidding on this project, come and do it, we're going to supply materials, owner supply materials, so something that we normally would never do, but we had to do it because we needed to secure that pipe, so that we couldn't wait until this bid went out and then find out that there wasn't pipe available, when you've got Fessler and Bowman who are thinking that they're great guns, and you guys saw, it was in July that we did our, August when we did, or end of July, when we did our? Walk through and drove out there and you guys got a look at it. Tremendous amount of progress has occurred since, a couple of months ago when you guys were out there.
Yeah, it was great foresight, those materials are six months out, and that's one of the issues we're having on Baldwin Road, one of the material issues.
Okay. Very good, thank you. So, anybody care to make that motion?
Motion.
Okay.
Motion by Fike.
Yep, support by Ms. Hugo.
Support by Hugo on Item 8G. Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Six, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item nine, future agenda items. Mr. Limina or board members have anything in particular that you want to discuss? Mr. Fike?
Yeah. Metro Alliance mentioned this thing that I just thought I would mention.
Sure.
It's about, basically, I think it is occurring because people are dying, pedestrians are dying in increased numbers. So the government has created all this additional money. So let me just read you this, it's, it'll, it'll be a minute. One of the new programs of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, IIJA, is the Safe Streets and Roads for All grant. $1 billion is available in each of the next five years to fund regional and local initiatives to prevent roadway deaths and serious injuries. The grant program will fund the development of the safety action plans, and it was wondering if we have a safety action plan. It would have to conform to one that identifies this, and if there's other questions about this, we can contact the Genesee County Metropolitan Planning Commission. They know about the grant application process. If there's money to be had and it makes our streets safer for pedestrians, I say, you know, why not consider it? So it's out there.
Mr. Limina?
So I've had conversations with Eric Johnson from the Genesee County Road Commission regards to this, obviously, for us to do anything around the roads or these safe grants would require a partnership with the road commission. What they're talking about here to put that plan together is going to cost about $300,000 to $500,000. Then the grant money that's available for those safe routes require a certain amount of injuries or deaths to occur where you're going to propose to put them. He thinks that if we spend the $300,000 to $500,000 to put that together, we have less than a 5% chance to actually achieve a grant. So the road commission wasn't very excited about going after it, but they will certainly go after it if Grand Blank Township wants to go after it. There's obviously some matching funds potentially occurring. We can explore it, the board will have to make the decision, let us know that that's what you want to pursue. It didn't sound very promising in my conversation with the road commission, but I would be happy to go after it, anytime we can get some free money to make things safer, and it's funny, but one of the requirements is, I wish I had Eric's note, I'd, I'd read it to you, but has to do with the numbers of injuries or deaths at a particular intersection, and that's why you're targeting that for the safe routes grant. And we didn't have any in Grand Blank Township that qualified.
And $300,000 to $500,000 for the plan, that must be?
To put the plan together.
What a heck of a plan.
Of course, there's Robertson.
Say that in there.
Help me out. 300, so we spent $300,000 to $500,000 to develop a plan that we have a 5% chance going forward of getting a grant for, to actually implement it and put it in place?
That is what I was told by the road commission, which is also why I said I was not interested in pursuing it any further.
The odds don't look good.
So anyways, if, if?
And wasn't it prior M dot, or transportation plans that brought cars and bikes together on the same roadways?
Yeah, but you need to have a couple of people killed, then you can get more money to separate them.
Tongue in cheek, of course.
Yeah, very tongue in cheek.
I think we have a good plan with our non-motorized pathway plan.
But there could be some updates or changes, you know?
We'll keep an eye on it.
From what Trustee Fike heard, and so I'll look back into it again to see if there's any opportunities that, and I'll bring them back to the board to see if you want to pursue it.
I just saw the billion dollars and I thought, hey, maybe we can?
Anytime anybody sees some grants, you know, send them over to Dunus.
And the fine print is what he was mentioning.
Send them to Dunus if you see any grants and we'll go after it. Ms. Hugo?
I'm glad that you mentioned that, I just wanted to piggyback on what Joel said. I want to say within the last two weeks, I've had six people reach out to me regarding non-motorized pathways on Hill Road. There are, all of the, especially between like Center and Belcy Road, all of the apartments and they have some townhouses in there, there are constantly people walking back and forth. I've seen people carrying Kroger bags, there's, I know, and that's actually, a couple of times I've seen this guy carrying Kroger bags walking down Center Road, but I think it would bring more business to, you know, the places that are in the township if we had easier ways for these residents who don't have, you know, vehicles to get by.
So I believe our, our plan has one eventually on Hill Road, but right now, the priority is, you know, from what the board said anyways, does that, that Cook Road Embry, I know, we did receive some initial estimates, I think.
$2.1 million.
To build that pathway, and our, our share of it probably will be, what's your think?
$300,000.
$300,000, so?
If we can raise all the other matching funds.
The other $2 million or?
Can we have a bake sale or something?
Pop Can Drive?
Yeah. I mean, typically what we'll do is we, you know, that is identified as the next priority on our non-motorized pathway plan is the, from the new Dort is that Embry-Cook. Last time we applied for the federal TAP grant for that project, we didn't get funded because it was the Dort Highway and they were saying it, it doesn't connect to anything. If you guys would be willing to do the whole Embry-Cook Dort, we would look at it differently. Well, that's awesome, other than in order to get that $600,000 or $700,000 they were willing to give us, we would have had to commit an additional $2.1 million to make this go, and there was just no way we had the funding for it. So we got the first phase, you know, nearly complete now, now we'll go after it. Now maybe we can get, you know, $700,000 from them, we're going to have to combine, or maybe we can get a million dollars in, in grant funds, then we're going to have to go after, like the MNRTF grants, and we can get up to $300,000 from that, and we're going to, it's $2.1 million, we need to have at least a 30% match, so you need $600,000. If we combine our $300,000 with an MNRTF grant for $300,000, we can come up with our matching funds, but we still have to dedicate $300,000 plus find, you know, the, the other $1.4 million to complete it. So it, it, it takes a little bit of scrambling and it takes a whole lot of adding grants together.
And that's just the money side of it. The other side of it is getting the right of way. So for example, on Hill Road, I imagine, I'm not sure how much right of way is there, and you've got people that don't necessarily want a pathway going through their front yard. It's the same on a lot of roads, and I, we haven't started talking to people on Embry, Embry Road yet in terms of where that pathway would have to go, or if it encroaches on anybody's property, but?
We'll need easements all the way across, but that's Hemmeyer's job, he's going to go out there and get those easements for us.
And, we're going to get, we're going to get those for free too, right?
Reasonable.
Yeah. So there's a lot of work that goes into it, but, you know, the goal is to get them on a lot of the major roads, and our, our plan, I believe, has been going down Hill Road, but, so unfortunately?
Going into the city, both ways on Hill Road.
Yeah. Unfortunately, it's just a matter of money, so any of you win like, you know, a billion dollars, I would hope that pathways would be one of your priorities for donating.
It's funny you say that. I had a dream that I won 17 and a half million dollars, I think this was last week, and I decided that I was going to work five more years. Who would do that?
More like a nightmare.
Yeah.
Okay, so board reports. Ms. Hugo, anything on planning commission?
I do not have anything to report, other than our next meeting is October 6th.
All righty, Mr. Fike, you mentioned Metro Alliance, anything additional?
Nothing else.
Okay. Dr. Raridan, anything with Police Committee? Okay. Mr. Kilmer, anything regarding the Treasure Department?
We're good.
Okay. Clerk Robertson?
Absentee ballot applications have been mailed out, and we are starting to receive them back in large numbers. They are, they are being organized and processed, awaiting, we are awaiting the ballots, which have also been proofed and are, during the process of being printed, and we will then begin sending them out when they arrive. We're running like a well-oiled machine.
Very good. I just have to say that, you know, things in our township are going great with regard to development, and what's, as we mentioned earlier, it's, it's great to see that the city of Grand Blank, the development there has really caught fire with lots of new things coming, and I think we're finally going to get some restaurants, so that's good. One of the things that this board has been, I've been keeping the board apprised of, and I know we have a, very much a vested interest in, is the 911 consortium, countywide 911 services, and we've had concerns over the EMS or ambulance services not being dispatched on the basis that the state law requires, which is the, the closest and available EMS unit, instead they're, they're dispatching based on who has a contract with a particular municipality. We requested data from 911 in terms of response time data for municipalities that have contracted to see, you know, what that, those times look like. I'm pleased to say that we did file some paperwork with the court, but we did on that same day receive the, the data that we requested. It's in a, a large format, so we're, you know, we're going through and formatting it to a, something that's a little bit more discernible, and we had a committee meeting today, we discussed a little bit of it, and we're going to continue to research those numbers. Dr. Raridan?
So I just want to back up, you were talking about dispatching the closest ambulance, and I heard that there was a heart attack in the Fenton area where the closest, closest ambulance, I think, was bypassed, and the person had to wait 35 minutes and he subsequently, or she subsequently, passed away? Do you know anything about?
I've heard that as well, Dr. Raridan, and we're going to research that a little bit further, but, but I've heard that the contracted ambulance took 30-some minutes, 35 minutes or? But I've heard that the contracted ambulance took 30 some minutes, 35 minutes or more to get there. And I've heard that another ambulance service responded that they were closer and could go. I think they, from what I, and I haven't verified that, but I, we are researching that.
Because that obviously presents a huge problem for everybody, especially the family of the person. But that leads me to a second question, if I could, and it's kind of directed at Attorney Laddie. So the law requires that they dispatch the closest.
Available.
Appropriate unit. So do you know if, what is the penalty for violating that statute?
Well, that's a good question because also in that act is also a sort of a blanket immunity for dispatch centers. And so I don't know what the answer to that is, particularly if you have a, if you have an argument or you could make a case that there was some gross negligence involved. In other words, a willful or wanton disregard of the requirement of the statute. I don't know if that would rise to the level of getting past that immunity clause in that, in that act. And so from my perspective, and I, and again, I'm, I'm seeing both sides of this, of this equation. That causes me a great concern for everybody in the consortium. Because the more, the farther you get away from that strict statutory language, the more trouble you have trying to protect your communities from exposure.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering about, like, if a, if a police officer does something that they shouldn't do, he failed, failed to do something, it malfeasance. Now, would, would that cover something like this? I mean, if.
I think that's a good way to think of it. I think, I think that, that your duties, as far as dispatch center are concerned, your duties are laid out pretty specifically in the statute and it's pretty clear. And then just like in police work, the farther, the farther you get away from your training, the farther you get away from the, the accepted method of, of acting, the more in danger you are of exposing, exposing yourself and, and your municipality to some financial liability.
Because I would imagine that, because somebody tells you not to dispatch some, you know, person A, that you still have an obligation to do the right thing. And so I, I am curious as to what this really could mean for the dispatcher, for the dispatch director, the whoever's in charge of it. I mean, they can't, a, a police officer, if they're given an illegal order, they can't obey it. And I'm wondering if this falls under the same thing.
Well, it, it, I hope we don't find out, but we're getting closer to that scenario, I believe. If, if these, if it's true that that data is showing these kinds of incidences, then it's going to take a lot, I think it's going to take a lot of review by the consortium as a whole, but also as these individual communities, because they're participating in this diversion, for lack of a better term. So I, again, I, I'm, I'll be interested, just like everybody else in the county, I think, to see what the data says. I, I'd like to hear success stories too, if there are any, but it's, it's a very troubling time right now.
Yes, Clerk Robertson?
Just following up on your comment of a moment ago. You mentioned that the statute has immunity provisions for the dispatch center, but that immunity has to be conditional upon adhering to the state statute.
Certainly it's conditional on, on behaving reasonably. And one would think that if there's direction in the state statute, that that would be the definition of reasonable behavior. But giving, given different fact scenarios, I think, I think you could stretch that if you.
You mentioned potential liability for the dispatcher, the dispatch coordinator. Could that liability extend to the board, the members of the consortium as individuals who, who voted for or directed an illegal act?
I think that's, that's unlikely. Because again, you're, so you're, Grand Blank Township is a member of the consortium. And so I don't, regardless of whether you said, let's have a contract or let's not, I don't feel that, 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 that any individual liability will trickle down that far. But there certainly could be liability for the communities. And there's a, and Supervisor Bennett's pointed this out also. There's, there's a framework in the consortium agreement that talks about spreading out liability and it, and it spreads it out based on population. So everybody's got some exposure here. Grand Blank Township has, has more than most, but I think you as an individual do not. And I don't think other, other township board members do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Yes.
Yeah, but, but I guess I'm more directing this towards the people at the dispatch center.
Yeah.
Because.
Well, they're the ones that are curating, they're the ones that are actually making the dispatch decisions, right? I mean, they may be, they may be doing it based on information they've received from, or instructions from a community. But I, I think that those people would be concerned.
Well, because it, it's an unlawful order to tell them not to dispatch this closest person.
It potentially could be. I, I'm not sure as we sit here today, I'm not necessarily sure that there isn't some argument that could be made for an alternative, alternative measure of, of dispatch. It doesn't, I don't see the, the path toward that. But I'm not saying that, that somebody else couldn't or a fact finder couldn't. But, but you're certainly moving down that road, in my opinion.
Yes, Treasurer Kilmer?
What is our position or as far as dispensing medical care, medical transportation, whatever? What is the position of the township?
Well, we, we don't do medical, go ahead.
That's correct. I mean, you, you, so you are, you are a participant in the 911 consortium and, and emergency calls throughout the county are dispatched, they're received by 911 and dispatched by 911. You have sort of an intermediate dispatch service at your, at the township police department. But you are just like everybody else in the county as far as dispatching emergency services. 911 controls all that.
So the sheriff might show up with their paramedics, you know, depending on the type of call, you know, and then EMS, so.
You know, I want to point out because you, you did not opt to have a contract with a specific provider. So you're, you're saying to 911, dispatch the closest available to the, to the folks in Grand Blank Township. And, and that responsibility is completely theirs.
Yep. So what, what Dr. Riordan, you know, is saying is that if, for example, if this board came up with something that we wanted Mr. Lima to do as our employee that was either unethical or illegal, Mr. Lima probably would say to us, I'm sorry, you know, I understand where you're coming from, but I can't perform illegal work here. And besides being a member of the international, what is it, the ICMA or whatever it is, which is an organization for superintendents, managers, what have you, municipalities. Besides that, you wouldn't want to do an illegal act. Any comment, Mr. Lima?
I think we may have some history here that I won't comment on, but it, it's, it's true. And it is, I mean, I have an ethics oath of the organization that most professional managers belong to the International City County Managers Association. One of our tenants is that we, I can't commit an illegal act, even if ordered to do so through board motion. My obligation is to point out to you that if you were to take action, it would be deemed illegal or in violation of state statute. Doesn't mean the board can't order it to happen and it happens. But it would put you in a situation, and I think, I feel for the director for the 911 consortium because I, I think he's carrying out the wishes of the board and a majority approved these contracts and moved them forward. There's no issue with signing exclusive contracts, but it really comes down to dispatching and it's, it's a direct violation of the 911 act to dispatch. You have to dispatch the closest available appropriate unit. And that's not happening in, in this case. And if the board, if I was in those shoes and the board had ordered me to do that, I, I wouldn't have been able to comply.
Well, the other, you know, discussion that we've had with our committee here at the township is, you know, with regard to insurance. And the other part, portion of asking you to do something that's illegal or what have you is whether or not our insurance would cover us at that point. Mr. Riordan had a very interesting example. But the bottom line is that if this board takes an illegal action or is doing things that are outside our, our realm, our insurance company is not going to provide coverage for us. So one of the things that, I don't care what organization you're on a board for or what have you. If, and I'm no attorney, but I do work in insurance. If you're doing illegal acts, it's going to tell you right at the beginning that if we, you know, we're researching whether or not you have coverage. And that's one of the first letters you get when, when you get a lawsuit and your insurance company lets you know that, well, we're taking a look at this to see if, if we're going to provide coverage for you. That's when you're sweating bullets. And in, in this case, with us not following state statute, I'm not sure anybody's insured. I, you know, I'm not an attorney, but the ones that have spoken on this, I've seen where some of them have said that you won't have coverage. Mr. Fike?
But just to follow up on what Mr. Kilmer was saying, just to reiterate, Grand Blank Township has opted out of this. We send the closest ambulance, but other jurisdictions have not. And if there's a lawsuit in another jurisdiction, it would sue a consortium that we are a part of and that it would cost us.
The most of anybody.
Yeah. And that's why we're fighting this so vigorously.
Correct. It's, it's the decision of the 911 consortium that we're concerned about because it's, like you said, the liability isn't spread equally. The, the liability is spread based on formula of if there's ever a shortfall in funding. I believe it's, is it just population or is it population and taxable value?
I think there's, I, I, population is the biggest part of it. I don't think it's taxable value, but it's, it's, there may be some other element to it, but make no mistake, you are the, you're the biggest pocket.
Yes. So if there's any liability, we're going to end up suffering the most. Clerk Robertson?
Well, our entanglement or intertwining with this is we can't, we can't undo, untie the knot. What happens if, if under contract, they send an ambulance to, to a call that would have been the closest ambulance for somebody in Grand Blank Township? All right? And then our, our constituents are not served because they're off violating their contractual obligation, although they're in violation of state statute because they're not the closest, but, and that. And then where, where are our constituents? Just to elaborate further on the, the Gordian knot, if you will, of, of circumstances that this situation creates. And it all stems from an improper action by the 911 consortium to engage in these exclusive contracts contrary to state statute.
And one of the things, and Supervisor Bennett and I just chatted briefly about this. One of the things that the data, I think, will help everybody understand is if there's a scenario where obviously the, a closer ambulance was bypassed for a contract ambulance in another community. And hopefully it will also show that if there was, if one of those contract ambulances was in Grand Blank Township, got a call and, and then left our jurisdiction for something else, that it would show that. And I, one of the things that I, I'm, I'm excited for all members of the consortium to be able to do is analyze the, the effects of these contracts for contracting communities and non-contracting communities. And it, it may cause a shakeup. It may cause people to see things in a different way. I, I haven't seen the data, but, but I'm, I'm, the more everybody learns about this, the better we're all going to be.
So, so really, you know, there's, there's two factors here. One is that, you know, is, has these, have these actions caused an improvement in the response time? But regardless of that, you have the situation where we're not following the state statute, regardless of whether it's improved the time. So there, there's two working elements here. And we'll see where the data, you know, we, we've always been saying, let's look at the data. And now that we have it, we're analyzing it. Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to show what that, what that is determining. Maybe, you know, maybe it'll convince some people that we need to look at it, at the data and make decisions based on data. Okay, thank you. Attorney Laddie, anything?
Nothing, Ed.
Okay, Mr. Lima?
A quick update on our search for our next police chief. Not that our current police chief isn't doing an amazing job. Thanks, Matt. The, we have, as of today, I'm aware of nine candidates. Talked with recruiter earlier today. That's very positive. We've only been out there a little over a week. Went live on a week ago Friday. We had five through the first week. We've already added another four. Very quality candidates coming through, so really exciting. I, I expect that we, we run until October 7th, I believe, is cutoff date. I think we may have, you know, somewhere between 30 and 40 candidates for our police chief's position that bodes very well for a great selection process. I know there are some internal candidates as well as external candidates. And I'm excited to see as they come through where the recruiter will do that first, kind of weed through and, and provide us an update from that. I think by then, maybe the police committee wants to get together and we'll kind of have a little conversation about how we're moving forward, going through those candidates. So that's exciting, but it's heating up for Grand Blank Township and I, I think that bodes very well for us. The fiscal year 2023 budget conversations in front of you. You do have the recommended or proposed DPW budget. Take the time to go ahead and review that. There was an update as we reviewed it and ran through the model on sewer rate increase. I think we had the water rate increase was initially in the fee schedule that went out with your general fund budget. We'll have to update that because a further conversation, it looks like we're going to make a slight adjustment in the sewer rates as well. But that will be saved for a later date. Right now I'm proposing that on your next meeting on October 4th, we will have some department heads here to have a conversation about the general fund and special revenue funds and give the board a presentation on what's different, what's the same for fiscal year 2023 moving forward and then the overall budget by department. Then on the meeting of October 18th, to have the DPW come in and do their presentation on what they're proposing for fiscal year 2023. That would still give us, I think there was like three meetings in November, two meetings in November and three in December to get through the approval process. But that will give the board the opportunity to hear the presentations from staff members and department heads and then give you guys plenty of time to make a decision on when you would like to have this come before you for the approval process. We have until the end of the year to get it approved. If there's anything specific in the budgets that you're seeing in your review, whether it's general funds, special revenue funds, or the DPW budget, reach out, let me know, reach out to any of the department directors with specific questions about their budget. But we'll try to answer as many as we can and keep it brief and leave it open for Q and A on those two meetings of October 4th and 18th.
Mr. Lima, I had an interesting, talking about the budget. At one of Ms. Hugo's teacher friends at Perry Center asked me to come and talk to them about our, our finances and how we decide where to spend our money. It was very interesting and the very good questions on how we decide where we're going to spend our money as a township.
So Scott brought the big spin the wheel and it said, non-motorized pathways.
Exactly. Unfunded liabilities.
Yeah. And finally, negotiations are ongoing. I just received a new update from MERS yesterday for a question we had in our continuing conversation with the police department about negotiations. I will next meet on, all day on Thursday with patrol to have a conversation. Went very well two weeks ago. We're looking forward to this conversation. We're trying to come up with a plan that, again, it's the MERS defined benefit pension plan that is the 800 pound gorilla in the room, where you're exploring all the options. We're following the board's direction and I hope that we have a, some very promising results to bring back to you after Thursday's conversation.
Fantastic. Very good. Any questions for Mr. Lima?
Is a motion to adjourn in order, Mr. Supervisor?
It is in order.
Then I will make that motion, Mr. Supervisor. And I will make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. Supported by Ms. Hugo. Next meeting is the 4th of October.
Yes, and we are adjourned at 8:10 PM.
Okay.
8:10 PM.